County.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Around South Jersey. My special guest this evening is Cumberland County Commissioner Doug Albrecht, whose favorite was Sister Judith. This is a funny story. Doug and I, before I even met Doug, all I heard from Sister Judith was what a great young man you were in first grade at St. Francis School, right?
Yeah, I really liked it. Well, I love Sister Judith, so actually, as much so, she actually went to my wedding. I invited her to.
Did she?
She's at my wedding.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Because I didn't, there was nobody, I was like, Sister Judith's got to come.
Yeah.
And she did.
What a great lady. Her name, her real name is Margie Tiarazi, and she and I went to Saint Mary's together. She was just a wonderful person. It was interesting, Doug, speaking, we're talking about nuns. Five of my classmates with Sister Judith, four other classmates, all became nuns.
Wow.
Unfortunately, three of them left the convent, but two, Sister Judith and Kathleen Dacey are still in there, two of them.
I just know she was my favorite, so and I just, we were talking, the laugh, and she's funny.
Yeah, wasn't she?
I just said, well, so.
She loves kids, and she, she just thought the world of you. But anyway, I, the one thing I wanted to start talking about tonight was I was so happy to see, to all of your commissioners' credit, the story about the potential of doing something with Salem County with a jail. Tell us about that.
Yeah, that we, we, of course, everyone knows that we have, we've had jail, jail issue for a while, and, you know, there were problems, and we have overcrowded, we actually send our, most of our inmates up to Hudson County, and that costs a lot of money for us. So we were trying to figure out, we asked, we looked for closer, we had contracts with people, shared service agreements that they did not honor, and we were then looking, well, we'll sit, why don't, it was Gloucester and Salem County were using, and using, Salem County was using Gloucester, and they had some issues with Gloucester County at the time, and so I said, well, let's, let's talk to Salem, and actually, between Hal Johnson and myself, we were like, so I picked up the phone, and I said to them, I said, would you be interested in being a partner with us, with Cumberland County? We're, we're same kind, Salem, Cumberland County, we're the same mix.
Yep.
And they, they listened, and I said, I basically said, I don't want a shared service agreement, I would like a partnership. And they, and you could see, like, well, what do you mean?
Yeah.
And that's how it really started, and Ben Laurie and Mickey, I'm drawing a blank, so.
He's the doctor.
Yeah. They both, they, both saw the potential for it, because it's really a mutual benefit for both sides. Cumberland gives us beds that are closer to us, that we could actually get to in a short, reasonable amount of time, get to court, and possibly lower our population, not three, two and a half hours, three hours away. And at the same time, we help Salem County, because they, they have bills, they have, for a small county, they only have 100 inmates, it was, it was tough, and at the time, they had some issues with Gloucester, it wasn't forthcoming, I weighed out a load, but they bridged it, and we, we had several meetings, we actually thought that Gloucester should be a partner with us. Salem was very, they were already partners, so.
Right.
And we had a meeting with Chad Bruner, from the business administrator for Gloucester, and he was in the room, and he sat and listened, and he goes, well, we'll sign a shared service. I said, no, we're not doing a shared service, it's going to be a part. Well, why are you so adamant? Because this is forever, like, we're gonna, if we're gonna take part in it, we're buying into this jail.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's clear, we're buying into the jail. And they took him a little while, but they came forward, because they understood that they had the same problems we have. They were, they were looking around for beds, and they, they, they were, they were being moved and shuffled, and they saw that Salem County was serious, and Salem County, to their credit, was marching on. They understood how good this was, a deal, and Cumberland also, we, we talked the same language. Well, Gloucester all of a sudden started to understand that this is a good thing for them, too, that now, that anyone knows, the court system is Gloucester, Salem, and Cumberland, that's our court system.
Same system, that's right.
So, which allows, we're dealing with same judges.
Yeah.
It makes it very easy, very smooth, and so, the bottom line is that we, we agreed to do a study together, and when I say study, was to see if, basically, there was built on wetlands, that was the study, because, and we agreed at the time that we would build a wing, they would build, Gloucester would build a wing, well, let me, I went too far here, which is, we needed to know the value of the jail.
Right.
Their value.
Yeah.
And we were a little nervous, because we have a bond that we, we received, that we, we have so much, only so much money that was borrowed, and we sat in a room to discuss the, how much the worth of the jail was, and Salem just wanted to know, how much was it worth? We had to wait for someone that actually could do a study on a jail. And we're in a meeting, and the business administrator, and Joe Cilio, and myself, and Ben Laurie, and Mickey was in the room, the commissioner, and they said, all right, we, our, our value of this jail is $55 million, and it would be 190 when it's done, and, and I, so the next thing is like, all right, well, how much do you want?
Right.
And, and they go, they go, well, we don't want anything, we just want to know that this is our value, that you guys got to even up, and so I kept saying, well, well, how much do you want? Like, how much do you want us for to buy in? Because that was the key, to buy in.
Right.
And they, they said, no, we don't want, and so we're like, well, this is even a better deal.
Yeah, sure is.
So, and so I credit Salem, they understood that this saves them money in the long run, because, and it helps them run a, they run a great, a quality jail now, and now we have good leadership at our jail, the director we've hired, and the staff, and I know we've always had good employees, they've worked their butt off during a, a tough time.
Yes.
And we, they understood how important this was, and they were right, they were along with us the whole time. We, we always, I always said this to, that there, if you have a question, ask, don't, there, I always said, there are no rumors. If you have a question, I'll give you the best answer you get, there are no rumors. So every once in a while, they call through this process, I said, well, what's the problem? And they would say, said, well, that's not true, that, and they go, or, no, this is the way we're doing it, and they go, we knew, but we had to ask. So I said, that, I want you to ask, so, and that, they were really, the PBA and the FOP were, really worked well. This past, we've settled a contract, it was, they hadn't had a contract since, of this 2020, maybe 2019, I'm not, I'm off to say, I might be off on that, but they, we settled it, and we, we've given, we've met their, we think they need to be closer, be up their pay, because you have to attract people.
Yeah.
And Salem County is, there are people actually get paid more, but we got close enough now, and they see that eventually, they're going to be the same rate as Salem, so that we've got them closer, and they see the potential, whichever union likes to be paid more, and Gloucester understood it, too, I think they were, they always seemed to be hired, but not in this case, they weren't, and now they understand, we're merged, we have good leadership at Salem, you mentioned, that Salem County's sheriff is a good leader.
Yeah, I think it's Mickey Ostrom, I think is his.
Mickey, I thank you, Mickey Ostrom, I appreciate that.
Really nice guy.
The commissioner, Mickey Ostrom was, was another leader in it.
Yep.
And so Gloucester County, they came along, their commissioners, I recall their commissioners just to talk with them about what the idea was, and they understood it, they understood that this was a good deal all the way around, it's, it's a good partnership. Now, the last year, we, we voted on this, and, and as soon as Gloucester got on board, it was a three, you know, three of us, but Salem County and Cumberland were determined we were moving forward, no matter what Gloucester did, but they did come on board, and, and they, with that, we, this last, and the end of 2023, we said that we are going to do in 2024, a year of planning to implement this thing, that the director and the wardens were going to get together and determine what their deal, the unions, that when they were input, they would put their input into it. The business administrators would get together, make sure that that was covered, the controllers would talk. So over this next, from the January 1st, 2024, to the day it will open, which the day, the agreement we made is January 1st, 2025, the structure of this jail will be determined, that they, they, the people that are actually going to do it are going to create this, and so, and that, so we will know exactly how the jail's format will be, and I don't, we don't even, I don't even want to dwell on what it's going to be called, but it, you know, Cumberland, Salem, Gloucester, whatever the initials are, try, try county jail, whatever, what, they don't even call it jail now, I don't, there's a term that they, no, they don't call it corrections, it's like something, rehabilitation.
Okay.
Sorry, we're old school, but they have a name for it, but, but let me say some of the things that have been planned that I know of, they're going to have a bigger mental health component, part of this jail.
Oh, that's important.
So, so actually, it's going to be expanded to have, so that a lot of problems are, are mental health problems, that they're not necessarily criminal problems, not that everybody, but.
Yeah.
There are people that if you give them mental health help, that may solve our criminal aspect of it, and so this jail is going to have that focus. We even talked about having a court in the building, so it'll be easier to process, and we talked to the judges about it, they have to decide, but these are the things I know about, but also, the, the numbers, you, we have over 400 inmates, they would come back from, it, it's going to take a little bit to build the wing onto it, and we're going to build the wing, Gloucester's going to build the wing, I think the jail holds about 378, 390 right now, 100 from Salem, Gloucester has about 200, we have 400, we're going to need about eight, we think, a seven, eight hundred bed facility, 800 bed facility, just in case for future expansion, or would you guys pursue before federal detainers, that we would be able to pay some, handle some of those inmates?
Yeah.
Just short term.
Yeah.
I think that Cumberland, you guys did it before, which.
State prisoners, I think.
State or, or federal, these would be federal, which Salem handles now some of it, but we're leaving some space for that, so that we, they, they pay more, and to, to generate a little income, by having this, we actually spread the burden of whatever, like schools, we, we actually have to trade people, help them get from, maybe they don't read, to reading, or maybe they need a trade, we, we actually are bringing in the road, College of South Jersey, Salem County, VOTEC, that we're trying to teach them a trade, get the unions, the trade unions involved, so that they may, if someone needs to learn a trade, so they have a, maybe a better future than they had, so don't do this again, whatever it is. Some, some you can't, but some you can. And that also to go from, you know, we're doing the advanced manufacturing and trades at our VOTEC, that they actually would take them, when they get out, forward from learning the trades to advanced manufacturing, I mean, that's what we're talking about, and Salem County's right with us on that, and Gloucester will be with us also, that, so they, they might have a future, trades are in demand, and this way, they don't need to commit crimes, maybe they have a brighter future when they come out, that's the goal, and, and Squash, I.
I think it's some great goals. We'll be back to talk a little more about this, because I think it's a really good idea, right after we take time out for these messages.
New Jersey Motorsports Park. Experience the adrenaline rush of go-karting on our challenging tracks with arrive and drive sessions available for all skill levels. Looking for something even more daring? Try your hand at ax throwing and see if you can hit the bull's eye. After a day of excitement, relax at the Finish Line Pub Restaurant and enjoy delicious food and drinks. Group experiences are also available, so bring your friends and family. For an unforgettable adventure, visit njnp.com to learn more and book your experience today.
At Mintz Insurance, we're proud to have been serving our customers for nearly 80 years, offering 30 different insurance products for your auto, home, and business, and to help ensure that you're getting the best rates possible, we give you up to three quotes for every policy, so you can choose what's right for you. At Mintz, we're part of the community, local representatives, supporting events, and proud of it. It's part of who we are. Mintz Insurance. Call today and find out how we can help you save on insurance, or visit us at mintzinsurance.com.
More than a century ago, General Tire was born, right here in America. Since then, we've made a name for ourselves by making tires you can depend on, tires built to handle any road this country can throw at them, and relied on by every kind of driver. So you know that no matter where life takes you, with General Tire, anywhere is possible.
Advanced Robotics. Experienced physicians. When it comes to minimally invasive surgery, we don't play around.
Welcome back to Around South Jersey, Jim Quinlough, Cumberland County Commissioner Doug Albrecht, and we've been talking in the first segment about the jail situation, and Doug, one thing, I, you might have been on at the time, George Castellini and I were talking about, and I think you were with us in whatever, 2019.
2019, yeah.
And one of the things that we looked at, and I, I actually like what you're doing better, but we had looked at outsourcing, like Gloucester County did, to Salem County, but Salem County couldn't take us, so we sort of had a tentative agreement, maybe with Atlantic County, and then they backed out, but what, the benefit that I saw, Doug, at that point in time, was costing us $22 million a year to house the inmates, at all the costs that were with it, but outsourcing it to Atlantic, had that happened, was going to take us, and give us about a $10 to $12 million savings, because we weren't involved directly with it. But what I liked, and that didn't work, because Atlantic didn't want to do it, but what I liked about the guy, the program that you commissioners are doing now, is moving towards this three-way deal, where you're partnering with, I've read that, and I thought, that's a really good idea.
Well, I mean, you know it's not new, you said that you guys looked at a regional before, and it's just, they have a facility, the facility, they have room in the facility, so it was, I mean, it wasn't rocket science, but it was, it was, it made sense, and it was the perfect time, because Salem understood, Salem County Commissioners understood, that they were backed against the wall, because they needed to make sure they, well, I always, I said this, and you know this, we pay our bills, Cumberland County pays their bills.
Yes, that's for sure.
And that's what opened the door, that we pay, and, and, but because we're, we're fiscally responsible, so.
You got a great financial guy there.
Jeff Ridgeway, very good.
I really enjoy his personality, he does such a good job.
He's good.
He does.
He's actually, he's, he's expecting, his wife is expecting.
Oh, he sent me a note, said he'd be off for a little bit, to contact the county clerk, or not, your clerk to the board.
Kim Cottisby.
Kim Cottisby, yes.
So, good luck.
Yeah, congratulations.
Soon, he's, he's a little nervous, but it's good, I told him, enjoy everything, whatever, it's perfect, so, but he's, he's very good, he's on top of stuff, he understood it, when they're talking about, when the numbers came out, they put it in perspective, and it's, it's, the one thing, it's a win-win-win, it's, everybody wins in this situation, and if we, you know, it's, we got some things that, that go forward, it's not perfect, but we will be in quicker than we thought the building, right now, the building cost us through the roof a little bit, and the facility will be updated, when we talked about the mental health part of it, it'll be, we're looking to be future, we don't want to go backwards, we want to build a facility that will be ahead of its time, that will tackle problems. Now, over this course of time, we haven't ignored our old, our jail.
Yeah.
We've really done some, we've brought a good leadership.
Who is he, who's the?
Chuck Albano is the, is our director, and he's brought in a ward, and underneath him, he's, he's the director, we've got more, we've got, we brought people back, people who left, come back, I mean, not tons, but the comebacks who filled in, the, we've, we've, for a long time, I'm sorry to say this, that we, the, I always got upset, because they would say the front door is, the door is broke, and, and the jail's front door would not lock, and I go, and I go, after years of, sorry, hearing that, I go, you fixed the door, I'd said it in some other terms, fixed the door, and, and we fixed it, we paid it, we cleaned, the showers and stuff were, were, if there was mold, we cleaned it up, we brought people to power wash and fixed the leak, we put new HVAC in there, and, and it's, and we, we got the facility, it's not, it's still, it's not, you can only do so much at a old facility, but it's much better than it was, it's, it's, you can walk in there, you can feel the difference, and, and the people that work there can feel the difference, so, you know, you like going to work in a place you don't feel like you're, it's, the world is falling on top of you, and, but I say this, like, well, why are you doing that, though? You're going to put a, you're going, you have a facility that you're doing this, why, why spend the money? Well, we spent the money, because the possibility is that we, we have juvenile detention, we do not have.
Right.
And we're sending them to Essex County, I believe, I think Ocean County's taking some now, and we've spent over a million dollars for 20, 20 juveniles, and it's a lot, and there are other counties doing the same thing, spending a lot of money, because there are only seven in the entire state that handle juvenile, and it's tough, that's a very tough group, the, the, these are not kid, they're kids, but they're, these are hardcore people, that's how they get to that point, and we, we want to have some options, so we've thrown out that the county, now, it's not designed perfectly, because it's, it's got to be individual cells, but it has potential that our partnership, that they may use our county jail to handle this population, I don't know how many Salsons got or Gloucesters, it's not as many.
That's a good point, yes, yeah.
So, so a lot of summer use it, and then, then there's space, and we design it, right, that we become one of the, they send us, and they pay us money to.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, so, and there's really nothing, I think Atlantic County might be one, and Camden that handle this, they don't really, are not very open.
Right, yeah.
So, so many of the towns, many of the lower South Jersey counties are sending them up to North Jersey, which, keep, they're not next to their family, if they have a family, that's what, they're, you know, it's tough to, to have any kind of relationship, because they're so far away, that, that's not fair, if you could develop something, you may, may help a kid, they, so, the bottom line is that we're trying to look at all the angles to get this to work, and the idea is to make it pay, it'll never pay for itself, but at least balance something out, because, you know, it's, it's tough, it's a burden on it, but it's part, this is a, a burden that the commissioners, the commissioner board, it, it's our burden, this is what, part of our duty, is to have a jail for our county, and we're, we're doing that, and we're doing it with, in, in cooperation with the other commissioners that have the same duty, Salem, Gloucester, and, and remember, and you probably remember this, that Camden did float an idea of a regional facility, and we, you know how many jails we have in our county.
Oh, my God, yes.
So, I was not.
State prisons.
State prisons, we didn't know, so they floated the idea, and when we were talking to them, because, oh, it was a great idea, they were doing it, all of a sudden, they came, when we were talking to Salem, when we were way of movement, we thought, well, we figured Camden was way behind, or way ahead of us, if trying out, they come, turned to us and said, well, will you guys host it? I said, no, we're not going to host, so they, they were still on that stage, and we were not really interested in doing that, and it just proved the point, let's keep moving forward and doing what's right, so.
Yeah.
I mean, there are other issues, I mean, I, to me, it's, it's good to see that we, I like when we tackle problems, you, you know, it's always better when you feel like you're accomplishing something, and, and when it works out, you could see the look around the table, when you're talking to people, that they know they're accomplishing something.
Yeah.
And, and I, the best fact is when you're talking to the unions, and they could see it, they knew that, like, that's, you know, this is something, this works.
It's sort of a win-win all the way around.
All around, and they were one of our biggest supporters, because they understood that, yeah, it's 20 minutes.
Yeah.
I drove, I drove down, I drive through Salem a lot, probably almost every day, I go through Salem, and I go, and I, so I would time different routes, I think the slowest route was 25 minutes, and I was taking, like, behind trucks, and trying to, trying to be slow, and, and they, and, and they understood that, hey, this is easy, this is really easy.
Yeah, really is, yeah.
So, and, and, you know, I, we have other, you know, people said to me, they're wary, like in Bridgeton, about this facility, you already know that we're not going to be totally out of the business, because we're talking about the juvenile detention.
Sure.
But there are bigger things to do in Bridgeton, and their economic development is a good thing, and, and jail, I, this is my personal, jails are not economic development, so.
They give jobs.
They give jobs, but they're, but they lock in.
Yeah.
We can do better, and, and I, I've thrown to Mayor Kelly, and we've talked about it, it's really not on books right now, but the Cohance Greenway, which is, would go from Fairton through Bridgeton, up to, take a hook through Hopewell, and to Mary Elmer Lake, and take, come down to Barrett's Run, I guess, I hope I said it right.
I think you're right.
And to the, the farmer's market, and they, I kind of described this, I could see, I've said this to Fairton's committee, too, that Fairfield Township, the Fairton, I could see that being like a little circle, where there's, almost like a long hill type, that people could walk around, because they could go north, and walk, bicycle ride, hike, they could kayak off the Cohance River, well, I'm going to say that, because I want to switch directions, but that you could really do something special, that you, that you, you may say, I'm walking today, and you walk down towards, from Bridgeton down to Fairton, and, and you have ice cream at the end of the tunnel, but I, that, this day, I'm on a, I'm walking or riding a bike at, at Hopewell, and going all the way down to the Bridgeton Zoo, because I'm doing a hook through, and I end up in Bridgeton, and riding the main drag, I mean, I said, and, and I said this to the mayor over and over again, that South, South Bridgeton is perfect for, because it, you, you slow, sorry for, you know. State prisons. Yeah, we didn't know. So they floated the idea and when we were talking to them, because oh, it was a great idea. They were doing it. All of a sudden they came, when we were talking to Salem, when we were way of movement, we thought, well, we figured Camden was way behind, or way ahead of us. If trying out, they come, turned to us and said, well, will you guys host it? I said, no, we're not gonna host. So they, they were still in that stage and we were not really interested in doing that. And it just proved the point. Let's keep moving forward and doing what's right. So.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, there are other issues. I mean, uh, I, to me, it's, uh, it's good to see that we, I like when we tackle problems. You, you know, it's always better when you feel like you're accomplishing something and, and when it works out, you can see the look around the table when you're talking to people that they know they're accomplishing something.
Yeah.
And, and I, I, the best fact is when you're talking to the unions, they could see it. They knew that, like, that's, you know, this is something, this works.
It's sort of a win-win all the way around.
And they were one of our biggest supporters because they understood that, yeah, it's 20 minutes.
Yeah.
I drove, I drove down, I drive through Salem a lot, probably almost every day I go through Salem and I go, and I saw I would tie different routes. I think the, the slowest route was 25 minutes and I was taking like behind trucks and trying to, trying to be slow. And, and they, and, and they understood that, hey, this is easy. This is really easy.
Yeah, it really is. Yeah.
So, and, and you know, I, we have other, you know, people said to me, they're wary like in Bridgeton about this facility. You already know that we're not going to be totally out of the business because we're talking about the juvenile detention.
Yeah.
But there are bigger things to do in Bridgeton. And their economic development is a good thing. And, and jail, I, this is my personal, jails are not economic development. So.
They give jobs.
They give jobs, but they're, but they lock in.
Yeah.
We can do better. And, and I, I've thrown to Mayor Kelly, uh, and we've talked about it, it's really not on books right now, but the Cohance Greenway, which is, would go from Fairton through Bridgeton up to, uh, uh, take a hook through, uh, uh, Hope Well and to Mary Elmer Lake and take, come down to Barrett's Run, I guess. I hope I said it right.
I think you're right.
And to the, uh, the farmer's market. And they, um, I kind of described this, I could see, I've said this to Fairton's committee too, that Fairfield Township. Uh, the Fairton, I could see that being like a little circle where there's, uh, almost like a long hill type thing. People could walk around because they could go north and walk, bicycle ride, uh, hike. Uh, they could kayak off the Cohance River. Well, I'm gonna say that because I want to switch directions, but that you could really do something special that you, that you, you may say I'm walking today and you walk down towards Bridgeton down to Fairton and, and you have ice cream at the end of the tunnel. But I'm, that, this day, I'm running, I'm, I'm walking or riding a bike at, and, uh, Hope Well, going all the way down to the Bridgeton Zoo because I'm doing a hook through.
Yeah.
And I end up in Bridgeton and riding the main drag. I mean, I said, and, and I said this to the mayor over and over again, that South, South Bridgeton is perfect for it because it, you, you slowed, sorry for, you know, the culvert that fell in.
Yeah.
That actually may be a blessing in disguise because the neighborhood has kind of rejuvenated itself into like a local neighborhood. They'll never believe this, but I believe it.
Yeah.
That you, I, because I have a customer back there and I would drive and I remember, I remember driving 60, 70 miles an hour right down, I guess it's South Avenue, driving north. And I go, now, I could hear people yelling across the street because they were out sitting on their porch. Before the traffic was so heavy, you didn't do that. And, and it took a while when he said that to Mayor Kelly, but I think he understood that the neighborhood's kind of, is, people are walking. They, they cross the road without fear of their life.
That is nice.
So, I mean, and we're, we're gonna fix the culvert. It's actually waiting for the state still, but I, the bottom line, you may not want it to be the way it was because you can now have people ride a bike down, down it without fear for their life. You could, there's plenty of buildings, uh, available that they might open little small business that, uh, because people buy it. Uh, yeah, I don't know if you had that, but Cohance, I, I talked to the guy that bought the Cohance Country of the Building.
Oh, really? I didn't know somebody did that. That's interesting.
Yeah, he bought it and he, he had some issues with the family things. And I said, you know, we really like you to be part of it. I, I don't want, I don't need to own it. You, you bought it for a reason, but could you work with us? And he was like, listen. So that we would have paths down to the Cohance River with, with, uh, so people could kayak. And then the mayor tried to says, well, what about my little dock I got up there that have people come out of there and just parking all ready? I go, I didn't even think about that. That's, that's good.
Makes a lot of sense.
And you go down to Fairton or wherever to get distant bar. But, and then Hal Johnson told me where, uh, that back in that area, there's some unique rock formations.
Oh, wow.
Back where the, I don't know what, what kind of water, uh, one of the mills. I don't know what the, there's a, he, uh, there's a lake and there's some really deep formation of rock would be neat to explore when you're walking down. I was like, man, this is, this is great. But, I mean, I, I went over that, but let's go to the other side. Just recently, the Morris River Corridor Study came out and the Morris River, you know, there's wild seating. The Morris River is designated as a recreational river.
Right.
And the, the, it pointed out as a general study, but it goes from West Side Park of Violet through Millville. Millville's a big part of it.
Yeah.
Down to, uh, the Morris River Township, a commercial township.
Right.
But it's, it urges us to, to give access to the river in and out. People, you know, some people can't kayak for 15 miles or whatever, about a mile. They have to get out in two miles or a mile.
Right.
So give them the ability to do that. And it incorporates the bluffs and, and all the, the, uh, the agencies, the nature conservancy, the CU.
Yeah.
Uh, and incorporates them as being part of this. And they were, they were big, they had a lot of input and it, it can be really special. The other day, at, at our commission meeting, Commissioner Soro brought up the idea, let's, which is to me, I thought was good. Let's, let's empower the violent with the West Side Park. Let's empower Millville to look at their area. Let's empower Morris River Township. And they're doing a boat dock or, and they have some, uh, some, uh, walkways they want to do. Let's empower them to do it. This way, you're not waiting for us.
Right. To do it.
They do their piece. And, and the study was very extensive.
Yep.
Uh, it, even though it was a kind of a broad, a look at it, it let, it talked about trap, slowing traffic down.
Yeah.
Uh, that you, you can't people, uh, you know, speed in the longest way. If people pull over on the side of the road, you gotta look, how do you get them off the road so they're not opening their door to ride on the road? Uh, yeah, but you know the area very well. So, and it's, um, and that ties into the idea with the library that I don't know if people know, but.
Well, before you get to that, we need to take a break.
Sorry.
When we come back, we're gonna talk about the Morris River Township Library.
Yeah.
And we'll do all that right after these messages.
Life on Earth offers some challenges. Things are constantly changing. Seems like we're fighting battles all the time. But you're a warrior, a warrior for God, and he's given you the armor of God. Join Pastor Myers for this exciting series on how to be equipped to win. It begins May 5th at 11 a.m. New Life Church, Millville, New Jersey.
New Jersey Motorsports Park. Experience the adrenaline rush of go-karting on our challenging tracks with arrive and drive sessions available for all skill levels. Looking for something even more daring? Try your hand at ax throwing and see if you can hit the bullseye. After a day of excitement, relax at the Finish Line Pub Restaurant and enjoy delicious food and drinks. Group experiences are also available, so bring your friends and family. For an unforgettable adventure, visit NJMP.com to learn more and book your experience today.
At Mintz Insurance, we're proud to have been serving our customers for nearly 80 years, offering 30 different insurance products for your auto, home, and business. And to help ensure that you're getting the best rates possible, we give you up to three quotes for every policy.
So you can choose what's right for you.
At Mintz, we're part of the community. Local representatives, supporting events, and proud of it.
It's part of who we are.
Mintz Insurance. Call today and find out how we can help you save on insurance or visit us at mintzinsurance.com.
More than a century ago, General Tire was born, right here in America. Since then, we've made a name for ourselves by making tires you can depend on. Tires built to handle any road this country can throw at them and relied on by every kind of driver. So you know that no matter where life takes you, with General Tire, anywhere is possible.
Welcome back to Inside Track here at the New Jersey Motorsports Park. Like to thank them for their hospitality. And folks, I gotta tell you something, honestly, people say, where do you go in Millville to eat? One of the best places is right here. The food is fabulous, the prices are good, and it's great atmosphere. And you can come out. You don't have to have any special invitation. You just drive up, you tell the security person, Jim Quinn sent you to this Finish Line Pub, and she'll say, oh, good, go ahead and go. And you don't have to say, I sent you. Just come over.
I did that at the gate. I did that at the gate. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. But it is wonderful food. And there are Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sundays, they're open. And, uh, they just, I really enjoy their food here. So if you're looking for a place in Millville to go have a fine meal, this is the place to come. And again, it's very affordable. So talking about Morris River Township and Doug, it's funny, it's funny talking about places to go. Now, it's right outside of Morris River Township. It's in Dennis Township. But my friend Joe Pepitone and I and Fred Melendez, Charlie Flickinger, we found this place. It's called Buena Gusta. It's an Italian, basically, it's a pizza shop. It's in Dennis Township. So I go through and I, I go through where you're gonna be talking about down on Route 47. And I pass Kenny Wilden's house in Delmont and I go right on down. And anyway, we stop there. They have a, honest to God, the biggest pieces of pizza I've ever seen in my life. And you get two of these giant slices of pizza and unlimited beverage for like $9.99. And for me, I can only, and you can only eat one. I use the other one for the next day. And, uh, but it's, it's a neat place to go. So.
And that's all right on 47?
Right on 47. Yeah. It's if you, well, when you get to that light where 3:47 comes in, you make a right, obviously, it's where on 47. Make a right, it's about two miles down the rain.
Is it with the gas station?
Yes, it is. Yeah, you know. So you go to the gas station. And they have good, reasonable gas there as well. Yeah. That's the place.
That's good to know.
So anyway, when you're coming back from there, Doug wants to tell you about a place in Morris River Township and what you're gonna be doing with that.
Yeah, we, uh, we have, uh, actually, and it's a compliment to the commissioner board, we, uh, did a nice expansion in the county library. And, uh, we instituted, uh, changed not so much the outside, but the inside, how it was laid out, uh, focused more on, uh, on kids and teens and just refocused the entire library. Well, when we did that, and I said, and the commission board did it, as we did that, the state looked at it and they were actually really impressed. So they, they turned around and said, listen, we, we, we have money available. And we were like, and we've been talking about doing satellite libraries because, uh, uh, we want to expand to more of, uh, hopefully someday Vile, Millville, Bridgeton together, maybe Bridgeton Suter, but, uh, no, we wanted to do something like that. Well, all of a sudden, we noticed there's nothing in the lower part of the county. And they said, they, actually, they targeted, they wanted certain parts and it fit perfectly with Morris River Township. And there are no libraries in the schools at commercial, I might, might talk, but commercial Morris River Township, there are no, uh, school libraries.
Right.
And, and we've been trying to attack literacy in this county. And with that, we, that, they said, listen, we'll give you the money to build a, a library in this area. And so Ken Wilden, we were talking about, I picked up a phone and said, listen, do you, would you guys be interested? And do you, uh, do you think there's any land or whatever possible? And he, and you could see the, the smoke, or, you know, I'm on the phone, I could hear it, like the wheels turn. And he goes, I, I think we might. And even one of the largest landowners, uh, he bounced it off of one of the sand bodies, one of the land.
Wade Shugger.
Yes. He goes, I'll donate land for that.
And that nice, Wade's a great guy.
He just started to roll and he said, you know, I think there's land in what, what close it on. It's an old restaurant. It's on 47.
I used to go there.
He said, okay, Pine, Pinehurst?
Pine, yes.
Pinecrest or something.
Pinecrest, something like that.
So he said, this is available. That's land next to it so we could have events and like invite kids, have programming, just like we're trying to do up at the, the county library, we, programming, which we do actually, there's a, we have a portion of the programs. It's 30 days in a year, 30 days in a month. They're programming stuff at the county library. So it's constant and different groups. And he said, I think this, this would be good. And then the wheels started to turn. This could really turn this up because there are some vacant buildings. And by us pursuing this, by open doors that people see traffic that they may do, 40, 70, you know, is off the beaten path now, but the, the Morris River Township's trying to do this. And it was just like, well, then we were like, well, better have, we need like a, a tourism type of like bathroom. So people, they come to the county, they could go, before they go back, they could go to the bathroom. It sounds kind of hokey, but it, there is the facilities down there.
And you got, that's a good point because East Point Lighthouse is not far from where this is going to be. And that's one of the biggest tourist attractions. In fact, I love to take rides down there. I did a wedding at East Point Lighthouse about, I don't know, 10 years ago.
Wow.
It was on Valentine's Day. Coldest wedding I ever did. It was outside. I'll never forget. Wow.
Uh, the wind blows down. It's, it's good.
Especially in February.
Especially in February. So, but it's, uh, the, that's just one of the reasons you do it. There are a lot of others, but could make more things go, but they could wash their hands. They go to bathroom, then they can get in the car. There's nothing down there. People don't, don't really want to do porta pots. So it's really gives something, it's something people take for granted. It'll be there. And, and then even further from that, just all the program, the library, also the idea that it would have offices that county, uh, our county departments, they could actually go down there and meet our Veterans Affairs, our Health Department, uh, uh, even our Department Aging, they could go down there and send someone down. And people could be there instead of having to go towards Bridgeton or Millville. They could actually just meet them there because it could be something quick, you know, one day a week, one day a month.
Yeah.
And they would, people could go there and set up and, and, and meet with their, actually, they have, they could meet there. They have an office to do something. Yeah. So the, it's, it really could be this, uh, something special. And I, well, remember I'll parse of the middle mile, reaching down there, it gives it, and the libraries are the focal point of a middle mile. Middle mile gets to the end mile. Well, now you've got a point, you rush to the, to the Morris River Township. And you have, you bring the, the fiber optics, which is not too far from the western side, Western Cape Bay, who can buy into our system and pay for it. Uh, that this is, uh, and I, I'm gonna share this, that the, uh, the critics, and you, you're a bit of supporter, but a critic, criticism is that who's gonna get into this? Well, we've already had a major economic development. I don't know how much should I say, but look at Morris River Township. And it's actually, I'll, I can say this, that it's, it's a farm and they're all over the place. It's a farm undercover. But, but part of their, part of their operation is a data center, a major part of it because it's all computerized. And it's not, and this is not, this is high tech. And their jobs, their IT professionals are in this farm. And they're all over the place, this company. And it, and they look to Morris River Township. Now, I don't know if the middle mile had an effect why they would come there, but it didn't discourage them either because they saw what was, what the potential could be. Now, again, I'm gonna say this, and I'm saying it for a reason. Uh, they're, uh, violent is, uh, uh, trying to be a smart city.
Yeah.
And they have their plans. But here's another example. If, if you do it or you build it, they'll come. And, and people, I, I, what I'm saying is that people listen to this, that one of the, the biggest project that, or check that the county's ever received for planning, it's gonna be looked at at the next planning meeting, is a data center. They want to be in violent. It's, remember, it's stopped by square footage. So I, now, remember, I don't, I'm just supposing out loud that this could happen elsewhere in the county because we're, what we're planning to do, violent, they're coming to violent because violent's ahead right now.
Right.
But if we build it, here's a data center that they didn't anticipate. They, they never thought they would, they would come to Cumberland County.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
But we have a lot of things going for us.
Yeah.
And here we are that they're gonna invest, bring a major data center to the city of violent. Now, we have to look at it. It's gotta be approved. They've just, they've got hurdles. But they present, and I say that because it's the way it was said to me, Doug, this is the largest check we've ever received for planning in Cumberland County. Well, that could be the beginning, the beginning of what we're trying to do. Now, there are people out there, not a lot, because there are people that see the potential that, uh, the middle mile gets the end mile. And, and hopefully, and to me, I, I'm not doing this because I want us government running everything. I want, I want businesses and they see the potential.
Sure.
They do it. I mean.
Buy into it.
I buy into it. And, and leases is what pay that, I, I'll say this because I was the liaison when I was the city council of violent, the liaison to electric utility. That's, the violent has three, it gets, it gets two forms of revenue, taxes and the, the electric utility for rate payers.
Yes.
Well, the county would have an ability to bring in money through rate payers also through leases. That gives the county the ability to do more stuff. So when you have a project with, and I said this to some of the township mayors, you know, the county doesn't have a lot of money. We, we get money just like you do.
Yeah.
But if you have another avenue of resources, when you, when they have a good project that we're, that the townships need to do, and I say townships, the city of Millville, city of violent, city of Bridgeton, they need to do, now you have some resources besides taxing the taxpayer more to use to do that project. And I'm gonna bring up the, because you let me do it, you were talking, is that, you know, I, I think sewer and water is the key to allow Cumberland County to grow.
Absolutely.
And we, uh, we, we've been, I say, my colleagues and I have been pursuing, uh, I call it the southern project, which, uh, and the western project later, but southern project, which is Morris River Township, Commercial, Fairfield, and North Township. Their western or be their eastern side of the, those townships, but run in sewer to, uh, meet, to these communities that, that have been suffering long enough, even water. And you've talked about Laurel Lake.
Yeah.
Laurel Lake is beautiful.
Yeah.
Now, if they had those basic facility, basic infrastructure there, that place would just explode.
Boom. Sure. Yeah. They can't now because they have to have a septic system and it's gotta be so far from the next property and all that. But there's a lot of nice lots down there. And if you had water and sewer, homes would go up, people would be there. They'd enjoy the air. Beautiful side, both sides of Laurel Lake.
And so, you know, I don't know if you, we, we nabbing the extension, the studies came back.
That's a great thing. It really is. I've been following that one, watching you guys on TV.
And I said, and I told, you know, they had our engineer there and he talked about, and he talked about the angles and what we're doing. And it was good. He did a very nice presentation. It was first time I heard. But I, but I got up and I'm sorry, I was a little impatient with the meeting, but I said, this is an economic developer project. We're building a road. We could build a road anywhere. This is, the idea is to cut through, to open the entire western side of the city of Millville and the airport.
Yeah.
Open it up, open up buck shoot of road to development. And I, and I credit Mayor Ben, Ben Ramanek, who was there. And he said it better than I. He goes, he says, you want to lower taxes, increase ratables? I, I mean, I say it, but he said it perfectly. And he says, this is what you do. And this is way I lower taxes by doing this. And Millville's doing a lot of good things. The airport property, the.
Yeah, they just had that Leboni.
Leboni, just, people see the potential. They're, they're.
There's a ratable and jobs.
And jobs. And industrial park, Millville's been selling a lot of industrial space. But it's not, the potential to grow can't happen without access to a major route. And by opening the, by nabbing the extension. by opening the, by Nabababy Extension, you can get to the 55. It has to be quicker, if it's not quicker, they're not doing it, but if we make it quicker, they, it cuts out the center Millville congestion.
Yes, exactly.
It really could do some, and then, we don't just stop there, you keep going.
Yeah.
The Millville Airport, I mean-
Build that bridge. It'll never happen.
I'm not saying that, it's in your master plan, I put it out to people, it's in the master plan.
That'll never happen, the environmentalists won't let that happen. Certainly, going down Orange Street from the Millville Industrial Park, John McDonald, who, Lord rest his soul, was the chairman of the Industrial Commission of Millville, and I was the mayor, and this has been 20 years ago, was his idea, we were gonna call it the John McDonald Bridge, somebody said, "That's never gonna happen, the environmentalists won't let that happen."
Well, if you, if you protect, if you protect the environment to a point and you know that there's a problem getting people off Cape Bay, get them out if there was a major-
Yeah, good point.
That the Millville Airport becomes a great gathering point, get people out.
Yes.
So, there, there is a scenario that, and, but we could work with the, the environmentalists, that, you know, there has to be give and take and, but with sewer and water, you really open some doors and I, and it doesn't just affect them, it's not just Millville, Millville will be the center point.
Right.
It, it affects the commercial, it affects Morris River Township, it opens doors.
Fairfield.
And, and people, I'm gonna say this to you, people, this is a pipe, it's not a pipe tube, the, the FCI, Fairton, is online.
Yes.
It's three miles away from the airport, so it's three miles, it's, it's eight miles down to, to Commercial Township.
Yeah.
You could run pipes away from a, a facility, you can't run to a facility. Well, we've approached Southern State, we asked, when we were talking about the prison idea down there, I asked about the, the sewer plant there, if they would allow us to tie it. Well, Ken Wilden again-
Yeah.
Was it a beating and he, he brought it up again and they said, "Well, we're not really interested in, in allowing you to tie it, but we'll sell it to you." "Well, no, no, we'll give it to you."
Oh my God, that's even better.
So, so Ken goes, you know, so he, they've been followed up and we're actually doing, the CCUA is actually doing a study, if that's possible, that makes sense.
That would be wonderful.
But now, remember, you run a pipe away from a facility, not toward, so now you can build the other direction while you're building this direction, it becomes quicker, the middle miles, it gets built, it, it's not as big a pipe and, and also, there's a lot of money available, time is ticking, so I, we have the potential to do something and we could, and we have the resources to do something, we have the people that are starting to be committed, the mayors jumped on board.
Yeah.
I mentioned the western side because there's a problem on the western side also, and when I say the western side, Hope Well.
Yeah.
Shiloh, Greenwich, Stone Creek have a problem also that they, I was told that, that Shiloh hasn't done, what's changed at Shiloh? Nothing since 1700 or whatever. Well, I went to a meeting and they're, they, they actually approved the idea of, of looking at this project, all's I asked to fill out a one-piece paper and they had a debate, it was very democratic, they, they, they had a debate about it, they talked about it and I'm sure they argued, I was out of the room, and they came back and said, "Yeah, we'll, we'll do it." Because, and I'll say this statement to you, Shiloh, you know how small Shiloh is.
Sure, yeah.
But they lead the nation on lost population.
Yeah.
So, so, they can't build, it's just like Laurel Lake, they don't have the space.
Yeah.
But if you, but actually, Shiloh is actually set up better than most, they're actually have a state plan to allow it happen, they're right, Hope Well stops at their border.
Right.
So they can run there, it's, it's all set up and they, and they do it and I actually, they're probably the ones that can lead, so, and that's called the Western Project and this is the, and, and Shiloh, not Shiloh, Greenwich and Stone Creek also said they would be interested, so that's the Western Project.
Yeah.
And you, I don't know if people know, but today, there was a ribbon cutting in Upper Deerfield, they're on their own, they're doing a great job, Mayor Crowley and, and their committee, that this is the, the, and I'll make sure I say it right, they, they are the supplier to Home Depot, Home Depot through the entire country and they opened a facility right in, in, in Upper, Upper Deerfield. And they, so it's the, their facility, I wish I could tell you the name, I can't think of the name, but that's because they have, they have sewer up there, they're redoing, they're redoing a neighborhood that, that didn't, 60 houses, they're redoing it so they'll be able to grow.
Yeah.
They, they are, they are doing things right up there and the result is that some industry, now they have jobs, they're probably good paid jobs and they'll be busy because they do concrete for, the bags, you buy concrete, they supply them, all over the country, they supply them, and that'll be their facility. And it opened in Cumberland County and, and I credit, make sure I, it's Upper Deerfield that did all the work, it did everything to get them and they, and the ribbon cutting was today, so there's really-
That's a lot of good things going on.